Today is Wednesday, November 5th, 2025, and the special board meeting is now called to order. It is currently 5:35 PM and all board members are present. At this time, Director Fuller, will you read the land acknowledgement?
Yes, thank you. We are gathered today on the land of the Kalapuyia, who are represented by the Confederate tribes of the Grand Ronde and the Confederate tribes of the Soletz Indians. The relationship between the Kalapuyia people and this land continues unbroken to this day, and we offer gratitude for the land and for the generations present and past who have stewarded the land since time immemorial. We respectfully acknowledge and honor past, present, and future Native American and Indigenous students and staff of Salem Kaiser Public Schools. We invite you to join us in honoring these ancestral grounds and celebrating the resilience and strength of all Native American and Indigenous people.
Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening. We are gathered today to discuss the financial situation of Salem Kaiser Public Schools in light of the state's current economic conditions. One of our core responsibilities as a governing body is to ensure that the district operates within the resources entrusted to us. We have been monitoring our financial position closely, and given the uncertainty of the current economic climate, we're taking prudent measures to reduce potential challenges and to protect our district's long-term stability. We have prepared a letter for our staff and community members, which represents the collective voice of the board. While we bring diverse perspectives and experiences to our work, we are united in our commitment to the students, staff, and families of Salem Kaiser Public Schools. Our intent is to communicate clearly and transparently about the fiscal challenges we face and the proactive steps being taken to preserve the health of our district. We recognize the importance of these decisions and the impact they may have across our schools and community. We have asked Superintendent Castaneda to join us and walk us through the financial situation and current district actions. Superintendent Castaneda, the floor is now yours.
Thank you, Chairwoman. I am going to walk us through some of the financial details, but I also just am going to take this opportunity to do something that I so rarely get to do, which is speak directly to a large number of people, but our most important audience tonight is actually our staff, who I believe will be joining us either in this meeting or they'll be doing it later on. And so I'm going to show up today as if we were just sitting kind of across the table from each other. And I know that's strange because we're in a big, open meeting, but I just kind of ask you to try to join me in that imagination for a moment, that we are standing over the top of the window in a school office, or we're standing next to a bus, or we're in the hallway. Because the things that I want to share are truly about the district, but they are truly about you and the work that we are going to be doing together. So today, we shared news about a $25 million minimum budget reduction for next year. And we do need to make that reduction, but the way that we shared it today was designed because we wanted to prioritize our staff learning about it first. We didn't want you to hear about it from the news, or from social media, or from an email. We wanted you to hear it, you know, just kind of elbow to elbow with your colleagues and with your friends. And that's because I think that's the best way that we can be as a community, learning about and talking about things together. So there's just a few things that I, since we're talking person to person, that I want you to hear from me. The first is that I know this timing is hard, and I know that this moment has just got a lot of noise and uncertainty baked into it. But I do believe that there is only one right time to share news that matters, and that is when you have it. And I just don't believe in hoarding information. I believe in sharing it respectfully with people who you stand beside next to every day doing this sacred work. And I know that there's a cost of knowing because now I know the 25 million, you know the 25 million, and we have to carry that obligation around together. But still, I still think it's better to treat you with profound respect of telling you what's happening when we know it because you are our first community. The Salem Kaiser team is our first community, and we are doing this work together. The second is that I know you do not want to be in this situation. We do not want to be in this situation. None of us do. And we are. And so I will never drag my feet if a situation requires action or leadership. And I will never gamble with our students' future, or your livelihood, or the school district that our students deserve. And that's why we're announcing this action now because it doesn't deserve waiting. We know enough to start moving now, and we know enough to start moving together. And the next thing that I want to share, I just hope you again will imagine. Imagine we are actually physically together. We need you, and we need your work in this district. And you deserve every penny that we pay you. None of us feel otherwise. You deserve it. The work you do is spectacular. Our community knows it, our students know it. All of that is true. But there is another thing that is true. And it's just an undesirable feature of math now. Our budget is 95% people. And so it can be simultaneously true that we need everyone being paid a respectful wage and getting great benefits. And it can be true that we don't have the money to pay for all of those things. So as we start making these plans together, we're going to do everything we can to protect you. Everything. And there's still going to be at the end the reality that we cannot close this gap without impacting each other, without impacting our staff, without impacting our compensation. We can't do it because the math does not allow us to do it anymore. And I wish we could outrun the math. I do. I wish the math weren't true, but it is. And as I close, I just want to acknowledge that we're all in this environmental moment that it kind of rewards anger and blame. And I know how tempting it is to blame this board, to blame me, to blame our team. And that's okay, because you did not create this situation. But at the same time, we did not create this situation, and nonetheless, here we are. Here we are, along with almost every other school district in Oregon. So instead of blame, I choose community, and I choose conviction, I choose belief, I choose honesty. I choose to stand across from you and treat you like a colleague and a companion. And sometimes that might mean accepting hurt and frustration and anger, and I will absolutely do that because those are legitimate responses right now. I am relentless in my dedication to this district, to our students, and to you. And I'm endlessly hopeful about the work that we are going to do together. We are building something that is worthy of our students. And what better work is there than that? And yet, there's things we can't control. We can't control the news, we can't control the economy. But I believe that I and we can control how we respond. And so here's my total commitment to each of you. I will do everything in my power to help us move through this challenge and remain as whole as possible. I will share the news, good and bad, because you deserve to know the news. And I will never take my eyes off the future of our children. The decisions we make, the way we show up, the words we choose, all of those things are part of the path that we are building together for them. When I say that I believe we can become a model school district, I mean it in every possible way. In how our kids feel about themselves, in the achievements that they reach for, in the excellence that they accomplish, and in the way that you and I, and you and your colleagues, and all of us work together through the good and the hard. And we're always together in a shared and common pursuit. So with that, I'm going to hand it back over to the board and to, I believe, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much Superintendent Castaneda. At this time, I will ask Vice Chairs Harnish and Guzman Ortiz to read the board's open letter to the community in English and in Spanish.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you Superintendent Castaneda. Dear Salem Kaiser community, we are a seven-member school board, and each of us has different backgrounds and different perspectives. While our beliefs may sometimes differ, we are unified by our shared commitment to the students, staff, and schools of Salem Kaiser. Today, we share a challenge and are confident that we, as a staff and community, will overcome it. Oregon's economy is faltering. And because the majority of Salem Kaiser's funding comes from the state, that means our funding is wavering too. We're acting now based on what we know now and to protect our financial future. We're announcing three actions to protect our district's financial health, ability to continue focusing on teaching and learning. Action one. Salem Kaiser Public Schools will begin identifying 25 million in reduction from next year's budget. This reduction protects our long-term stability, which is necessary regardless of whether the state economy continues to weaken. Salem Kaiser's 25 million reductions will begin with district operating expenses with the goal of shielding schools and classrooms from immediate impact. Action two. We will continue to keep students at the center. Our financial reductions must prioritize the conditions that support teaching and learning. We will protect instructional time. Oregon already has one of the shortest school years in the nation, so we must find ways to trim our budget without trimming instructional days. And we will continue to be transparent, openly sharing reduction options and decisions. Action three. Salem Kaiser's salary and benefit costs are increasing by 9% annually, roughly 50 million each year. This year, 95% of our district's general operating fund is now budgeted to cover staffing, leaving no path to reduced spending without reducing staffing costs. In the coming weeks or months, we will start conversations with our labor partners about the likely difficult choice between future cost-of-living rate increases and staff reductions. We are deeply aware that both options are harmful to our staff and schools. We ask people to pay attention to the news on November 19th, when the state of Oregon will share new information about Oregon's economic health. Based on that information, the state will decide about recommended mid-year reductions to school district budgets. We are board members who love and care about Salem Kaiser's children, families, staff, and schools. We're also members of your community. Our children attend your school with your children. We see you at ballgames, various school activities and performances, and at the grocery store. And right now, we are leading our school district through complex challenges with very few easy answers. We hope you will join us in building the best solution together.
Thank you, Vice Chair Harnish. I'll go ahead and read the letter, which has also been translated to Spanish for our community members to hear. Estimada comunidad de Salem Kaiser, somos una junta escolar compuesta por siete miembros, y cada uno de nosotros tiene diferentes conocimientos y perspectivas. Aunque nuestras creencias puedan diferir en ocasiones, nos une nuestro compromiso compartido con los estudiantes, el personal, y las escuelas de Salem Kaiser. Hoy compartimos un reto y nuestra confianza en que como empleados y comunidad lo superaremos. La economía de Oregon se está debilitando, y dado que la mayor parte de la financiación de Salem Kaiser proviene del estado, eso significa que nuestra financiación también es incierta. Estamos actuando ahora basados en lo que sabemos para proteger nuestro futuro financiero. Anunciaremos tres medidas para proteger la salud financiera de nuestro distrito y la capacidad de nuestras escuelas para seguir centrándose en la enseñanza y el aprendizaje. La primera medida. Las escuelas públicas de Salem Kaiser comenzarán a identificar recortes por un valor de 25 millones de dólares en el presupuesto del próximo año. Esta reducción protege nuestra estabilidad a largo plazo y es necesaria independientemente de si la economía del estado sigue debilitándose o no. Los recortes de 25 millones de dólares de Salem Kaiser comenzarán por los gastos operativos del distrito, con el objetivo de minimizar el impacto en nuestras escuelas y nuestros salones. Acción dos. Seguiremos manteniendo a los estudiantes en el centro de nuestro trabajo. Nuestras reducciones financieras deben dar prioridad a las condiciones que apoyan la enseñanza y el aprendizaje, protegiendo el tiempo de instrucción. Oregon ya tiene uno de los años escolares más cortos del país, por lo que debemos encontrar formas de recortar nuestro presupuesto sin recortar los días de instrucción. Y seguiremos siendo transparentes, compartiendo abiertamente las opciones y decisiones de reducción. Acción tres. Los costos de salarios y prestaciones de Salem Kaiser están aumentando un 9% anualmente, lo que supone aproximadamente 50 millones de dólares al año. Este año, el 95% del fondo operativo general de nuestro distrito se ha presupuestado para cubrir los gastos de personal, lo que no deja margen para reducir el gasto sin reducir los costos del personal. En las próximas semanas o meses, iniciaremos conversaciones con nuestros socios laborales sobre la difícil elección que probablemente tendremos que tomar entre futuros aumentos del costo de vida y reducciones de personal. Somos muy conscientes de que ambas opciones tienen un impacto para nuestro personal y nuestras escuelas. Pedimos a la gente que preste atención a las noticias del 19 de noviembre, cuando el estado de Oregon dará a conocer nuestra información sobre la salud económica de Oregon. Basándose en esa información, el estado decidirá sobre las reducciones recomendadas a mitad de año en los presupuestos de los distritos escolares. Somos miembros de una junta directiva que ama y se preocupa por los niños, las familias, el personal, y las escuelas de Salem Kaiser. También somos miembros de su comunidad. Nuestros hijos asisten a la escuela con sus hijos. Los vemos en partidos, en varias actividades escolares y presentaciones hasta en el supermercado. Y en este momento, estamos guiando a nuestro distrito escolar a través de desafíos complejos con pocas respuestas fáciles. Esperamos que se unan a nosotros para construir juntos las mejores soluciones. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you very much Director Harnish and Director Guzman Ortiz. As a board, we care about our educator and staff experiences through this moment. We know district staff surfaced many questions during the all-staff meeting this morning. And I hope we can answer some of those questions through our discussion as well. We don't have all the answers, but our goal is to be transparent. The floor is now open for discussion. Going to ask the board members to please raise their hands to speak. Director Fuller?
I was just raising my hand because you told me to, and then you got paused, but I'll go first. It's okay. Wow. So, gosh, I've been thinking... I've been trying and trying and trying to figure out what to say, and... What really... The buy-in for me with this was our commitment to transparency and our ask for community and commitment. That was really important to me as we approached this. And, you know, I understand that it's not just our district, it's every district in the state that is looking at this, and it's coming. And I appreciate being one to lead the conversation and try to get ahead of it before it feels like we're behind it. And I just, I feel more control right now coming in at this time with it, and... And I feel, you know, as my being relatively new to the board... I'm going to go all over the place here as I say this, but one of the things that was apparent to me like in the first week is that there's so much for me to learn about this district and how it works. And coming in as a parent and a volunteer, I knew I had a good base to get started with, but there's so much more to learn. And what I want to rely on through this process is help from the people that we are asking to join us. And I don't want to leave any stone unturned. I don't want to, I want to look for all the solutions that we can. And my feeling, reading this letter, or not reading it, writing it, sorry, is that... You know, we want to keep students at the center, which we all do anyway, so that's not new. But the way that we approach this, keeping students at the center, protecting instruction time, academic success, I want to hear from everyone what that means to them. Because it can mean different things to different people. And I just really want to encourage our staff, our students... Not our students, sorry, our staff, our teachers, to reach out to me and let me know what you think are the best ways to approach this and what we should do. I'm going to lean on the expertise of the board and how we work as a unit together and the shared things that we have in common, as well as probably we'll learn a lot about each other through this process. I'm a little, that's a little bit... I won't say exciting, because then it sounds like I'm looking forward to it. But we're going to learn a lot about ourselves through this process, all of us, I think, as we go through it. And I think there's a lot of value in that, and it can turn into what we want it to turn into. I mean, really, we are... I really appreciate your comment, Andrea, about blame and anger. Believe me, I feel those things too. But those things, feeling those things and using our energy on those is not going to get us to where we want to be, which is through this, that those are not productive emotions, really. Nothing comes from them. So I'm really excited to see how we work together, how we use our strengths and our differences to come together to work towards one goal, which is our district and our students. And let's, uh... Let's get going on it, I guess. I mean, I don't want to sound flippant, but this is, this is... We got work to do. And let's do it.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Director Harnish?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, members of the board. And I appreciate our time here together this evening and sort of talking through this really sobering conversation. And I just want to say thank you too, to the district for laying this out in front of our staff. And really appreciate the thoughtfulness that went into that, as difficult as it no doubt was. And I'm anticipating that there are certainly lots of questions, but I'm anticipating that one, one large question that might be on folks' minds, and it probably was asked today, is, you know, the last time we went through this, not that long ago, the district announced administrative position reductions. And I'm curious if we will be looking at that again for this time.
Yes, thank you. Lisa, I'm going to scroll backwards and just kind of talk us through a little bit through the process. So we will once again be starting with district reductions. And we're going to make as many as we possibly can without getting to the point that we're compromising the core ability of our system to do its work. And those are hard decisions internally, those are hard decisions externally, but it is always the starting point. And it is only after we have done everything we think we reasonably can there that we would progress to any other reduction scenario.
Thank you. Jackson?
Yeah, I just want to give the student perspective on this, like, this really tough topic. I mean, the last time we went through this, I remember we had our... Our theater teacher was under threat of, I think, being moved or even losing his position. And... And our whole theater department came together and signed a petition and petitioned the, like, administration and the district to keep him. And I just want to let teachers know that students and the student community are, we're behind you 100% in whatever way you need us, whatever way we can help or be supportive, we're there.
Thank you. Director Shandegary?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you for allowing me to join from India. But it's early morning today. You know, it's today's 6th November. This... I mean, I've been, this morning, I got a question. Is it hard to share this kind of information right now with holidays coming and all other events happening nationally? How are you thinking about it? I just want to say... I am, first of all, a parent, a father of children. I'm 62 this November. And for me, all of you are my family. You know, we are empty nesters with 40,000 kids. That's what I keep joking, but that's a true thing. That's the reason I stayed up late in the night, talked to our superintendent a few days ago. I said, "Respect your time zones. As long as God willing, I have Wi-Fi. I will stand under a tree if necessary to be there with all of you." It is difficult. But I was just thinking, if this was to happen to my own family and suddenly my CEO calls me and say, "You know, we don't have the money," or whatever it is, I would do the same thing, what I would do, I'm doing now. I would be honest, I would be open and transparent, and try to say, "Have I done everything that is possible?" To kind of pause or hold or say, "Am I doing anything that I could wait maybe a year or two later and then continue doing?" And that's exactly how I feel. To just ask, "How are you thinking about it?" I am thinking about each and every one of you. I was the school board, this is my second round, and I was a chair, and we faced COVID. We faced pandemic, we faced very difficult situations. I thought that was challenging and tough enough. But the two years ago when we went through the financial difficulty and we had to make those changes, that, nothing has prepared me for that. The only way I'm thinking about it is, as a parent, how would I come and announce to my family? Look, we are going to tighten our belt. And that's how I'm feeling about it. And I really started thinking. I spent more than an hour on the phone from US, sorry, from India, calling with different time zones and discussing various things and asking myself, you know... And then I also read some of the things that other school districts are going through. So I've been kind of, you know, in this place, I've been thinking of each and every one of you. So I've been kind of, you know, in s- in this place, I've been thinking of each and every one of you, each and every family and it, for me. All the thirty-eight or whatever thousand kids and their family, this is my community. And. We are dealing with three big cha- buckets of challenges, at least in my mind. Whether we like it or not, the cost is rising, cost of everything is rising. I can see it, not only in US but everywhere else. The revenue is shrinking. And the way I'm thinking, you know. It, it's, it's, it's not anybody that did or did not do. We are a very income tax-based state, we don't have sales tax. So if there are more people working and earning high wages, probably that's one way the income tax will lead to what is called a general fund. And that will allow us to pay salaries and wages. And. You know, our school's children, number of enrollment has been declining, it's not because of anything else, it has been declining. And from just this morning when superintendent said ninety-five percent of them, our. Whatever money we can use, what we call unrestricted money has been used on people. And that leaves very little reserve. There's not much more we can shake down and that little reserve. I wouldn't run my family, none of us would be able to take that kind of risk and run our family. Because sometimes some emergencies would happen with unintended conse- you know, unexpected is no storm or whatever it is. So. This is weighing heavily on me, to be honest. And we really have to be honest, which is what I see all our board members. It's not that we have any differences in this matter, because we all care about children, we care about our schools. For me, school is the reason I'm your school board director. Learning to read and write and finally speak English. And to kind of get through all the opportunity that led me to being your school board director. In the same city, I couldn't speak English when I first landed. The city of Bangalore nineteen seventy-three is when I learned to speak English. What I'm trying to say, education is valuable. For all the hundred and thirty different communities that, as immigrants, we want our children to learn, to learn to read, learn education. So. It, anything that decreases that opportunity. Will have difficult long-term impact. So we, anything that we can do to protect that. Should be one. Theme that we should keep in mind, that's what my thing is. And there are certain things. We have very little control over, like the person sector, it's, these are certain things we have committed to it. So that leaves us with very little. To, so I would really. Say, in this meeting, in this discussion as board members, let's. Be open and transparent and put all the possibilities on the table so that. We will really try to start asking what are some of the ways in which we can. Keep that focus of children's education. Reading, gr- graduation, because children don't have a second chance. Children will keep growing every year, they're gonna be a year older. We cannot stop their development process, they need that kind of input. If you don't give that input in the critical time. It's lot difficult to catch up. So that's one thing. We can certainly start asking or hopefully in discussing, are there's, what ways we can be laser focused on? The critical things at the critical time, at the right dosage, anything, and, and how can we make it work? Just like I would hold similar discussion with my family and ask. How can we pay attention to the critical things that are needed for my family? My children and then make it work. Safety, education, those kind of things are some of the things that is in my mind. It is difficult, to be honest. You know, between the jet lag and thinking of this, some days it just keeps me tossing and turning and asking what else, what else can we do? And we will be there. We will all work these things through and we'll all support each other and we will get through this. So that's how I'm thinking and thank you for asking that question. I hope. I answered, if not. When I come back, you can ask me this question again, we can sit down and have a cup of coffee and discuss this. So, thank you Chair.
Thank you. Director Guzman Ortiz?
I, I didn't have my hand up, but I, I do have, but I'll let Fuller speak first, just to respect.
I was trying to give everybody an opportunity because she.
I see, I see, I see. Well, I, I do have a question, maybe start with that um. And, and, and first, I, I, to student advisor Jackson, I really appreciate your words. I, I know we've, this feels. Very, um, if, for, for my, many of us, I think majority of us, right? Feel like we've been here before and, and the sense of uncertainty feels very uneasy and, and. Um, and it is hard. I mean, I think too, what Director Shandegary stated, so thank you, it's, it's always. Just so appreciate our student advisors and the perspective and lens that you bring to us, because this is what we care about, right? What your experience is in school and I know that. Um, it's hard when you. Know that your teachers who are there to guide, support, encourage you. Um, feel a sense of an easiness and, and it, and so I just, I just want to acknowledge that one hundred percent. Um, the, the question I did want to kind of bring up to, and you know, in, in our letter, we, we talk about, we, and we talked about this a bit as a board. Our, our focus and commitment to protecting instructional time and I also have read some of the, the news that's coming from other districts. And thinking back to when we were in um previous recession, recess- recession. That a lot of school districts used furlough days to balance their budgets and. We're not a decision-making place, um, but you know, as we talk about looking at the options, I'm, I'm curious. Uh, superintendent, like. Considerations to have around that as a. Possibility or option.
I'm actually gonna ask Deputy Superintendent Cobb to jump in, um, so Olga.
I was gonna ask if I could address that question. Good evening, good evening, everyone. Um, I was a principal at that time, at the time of those reductions and we had three pretty hard years. Um, and we use furlough days as some of those short-term measures to respond to a need. Um, the thing to consider is as, as we navigate together through this situation. Um, is that options that furlough days um can help us temporarily. But they're not a solution that can carry long-term stability or savings from year to year. So. Uh, we did use them as a temporary measure, but I don't know that it's um a solution for long-term. Um, for the long-term need that we have right now.
Thank you. Another question is, how can we strike the balance between investing in the new curriculum? At the same time that we have to consider painful reductions?
Superintendent Castaneda, can I jump in? As it's a curriculum question, if that's alright? Um, thank you Chair, I think that, you know, that is a really key question. Because we know that the investments in instructional materials and curriculum are a cost. Um, and as several of you have mentioned, um, we have a commitment to our core value for keeping students at the center. And our core work is teaching and learning. And so really, I think what's gonna be important as we move forward is to, to not sort of pit those two things against each other. But to really say, how do we continue to invest in um strong research-based materials? To support teaching and learning in the classroom and ensure that we have um the staff and the support of. Teachers and other staff who are um preparing that instruction and also supporting the operations of school. I think that that's going to continue to be a really important piece for us to continue to keep right at the forefront.
Thank you very much. Chrissy, did you have your hand up?
Thank you. Um, I did earlier with the um regarding the furlough days, thank you so much. Um, the. First of all, a couple of times, and I'm so sorry for this public, and I'm, I'm so excited that there's, I see now a hundred and eighteen people here that made it into the Zoom. Because I don't cry often, but I'm really struggling here. Um, because I understood when I took my oath that we are on a slippery slope downhill. We're making a lot of decisions, you know, as, as a state and doing different things. We understand there's gonna be challenges like this ahead of us and continue on. The furlough days. Um. Again, I'm, I'm so thankful, everyone's giving their, their thoughts, this is what it's all about. Hearing from everyone, that's why, again, I took my oath to, to try to help. That connection, we're each one individual voice and I hope that everyone continues to reach out more than they have in the past. We are u- used to hearing from the union. Um, I love it when I hear directly from staff. So I hope that you do all continue to ask questions and email. The one piece, I'm not saying I would vote against it or whichever for it, uh, for furlough days. Because we're now on this a second time and this is why it becomes emotional for me, because I understand. The hit even in my own home without revealing too much of my own personal um situation with my family and under my own roof. I can, I can definitely um sympathize going through all of this. I'll be eager to find out um, uh, November nineteenth, what the state decides in this particular situation. But I did not expect us to be in this situation so soon after, after the last um. Big challenge that we, we had with this. It seems even more scarier just to me personally um to consider something. Like furlough days, not knowing what next hit is gonna come around the corner. And what deduction we're going to have again against um whatever income we've got. And again, with, with um kids leaving the district and revenue continuing to drop. Um, where we'll be. So maybe we can keep discussing and we can do a collective. But I, the number one thing that I, I hope and want everyone to remember. Is that you are one individual voice and you do have a voice and we so desperately need to hear it. The students, that was so wonderful that we got to start off with that example of them coming together, the youth showing we adults. How to get things done. We're gonna use our voice and we're gonna share what, what we would like to see in our community and as a district and as a whole. And I feel like honestly as a family and I, I don't uh say that loosely or lightly, I, I mean it. And so, please, we welcome all of you, I welcome all of you reaching out, please, please share. I wish that we had more information to share in this meeting, but I do um agree with the importance of letting you know. Um, with that inquiry, for example, of it being before the holidays again. It's so tough to know when the right time is. It seems like waiting to the very end and ripping off a Band-Aid and being surprised. Is, is a dishonor to, to everyone, all the staff, all of you. And I can say with honesty and such deep truth that I do care about all of you. And I wouldn't want that for any of you. So. I, I hope that you don't start feeling uh disencouraged to reach out and share your voice, that your voice does not matter, because that is not it at all. It's the opposite. So thank you again for spending your time and being here and bringing up the furlough and the other questions for letting me speak. Thank you so much.
Welcome. Director Parker? While we're waiting on her.
Jennifer, if you have your computer with audio on, if you could mute it, because we hear an echo.
Unmute. Okay, can you hear me better? I just turned it off. Is that better? Okay. Yes, yes, I wanted to say thank you for everybody and um listening to all the other board members. Um, I agree that right now, this is a scary time for our community with all uncertainty going on. Um, with the staff benefits and we're not knowing until the November nineteenth what the real budget is gonna be. Um, but I, I do agree that we needed to, we needed to start doing something about it. Letting people know, um, not waiting until the last minute. And I was looking at the budget and i- it is, it is disturbing at this point. And um, I don't like. My first goal is always for the students and to make sure that they're learning, especially whom we're doing so good right now with them. Improving all the reading scores on, and all the schools, seventeen um schools, just reported increased schools. Um, it was great. Um, but at the same time, we have to figure out what to do. Um, to be there for those students, but at the same time, figure out a way to come up. With a way to we can have, and, and seal this gap to make it work, so we have emergency funds. So we don't have to um do some more deeper cuts years down the road that we can get this in, you know, nip it in the bud. Do something now to help um to, to make the schools better and I just, I just wanted to say that. You know. That, uh, thank you for um us getting together and making this a priority and. And I, I hope we don't have to, personally, I hope we don't have to go to. We, you know, cutting so many stuff or even doing furlough days because that takes away from our students and their learning. Um, but wh- whatever needs to be, whatever the union decides, I. You know, I will be there, I will support, I, you know, w- w- we'll have to figure this out. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Yeah, Dr. Fuller?
Let me unmute, let me put my hand down. So, thank you, uh, Chair Richardson. So um, as I, since I spoke first, I've been keeping little notes as we go along. And one thing I want to say is, Jackson, thank you. Um, to hear that. The students are here collectively for us, it makes me think of uh, the kids are alright. You know, we've, we've been, um, we've been watching students um and youth in our, just i- in our country. Lead and stand up and do amazing things and uh did it again tonight. So thank you so much for that support. Um. This, you know. The, the math that we have to do, which is what it is, it's math. Um, it, it's, it's, it's not numbers though, it's people, it's people. I, I've heard from teachers today worried that we're only gonna, we're, that. Anybody who's not a student-facing position is in danger. Um, I, I'm not looking at it that way. I'm looking um at our school district right now as a whole, I'm understanding who does what and how it's done. And um, there's just so many questions that I'm gonna have as we navigate through this and, and try to. Figure out what the best way to do this is. Um, you know. I, I think I'm gonna um. Kind of having a brain wall, so I'm gonna pass it to someone else.
Thank you. We have a limited time, so Sathe, I'm gonna let you speak quickly.
Well, thank you Chair. You know, for me, keeping the school open, preferably all year ideally. But uh, keeping the school open is not important, not only for educational learning. But also keeps our children safe and alive, literally. You know, there are districts and counties in our own state where they do not keep the school open. Monday to Friday, and I see a peak in all kinds of high-risk situations on the days like Friday, for example. So for us, we, you know, we saw what it did when we closed the school. We saw during the COVID pandemic what it did to the school. I don't have to relive that, but I'm gonna tell you. We feed nearly twenty thousand kids every day. We had to literally have brown bags sitting outside the class, school building and pick people to collect. So there are lot of good things that come out when our children are in the school campus during the school day. Stay in the school campus, they won't get into trouble outside, they don't get pulled in the wrong direction, they shouldn't be. It is mostly, it's for learning and sa- their own safety. Parents rely on that safety of the school. So it's a safety net for my community, for our community. So we have to really, this is a time where we have to kind of literally come to Jesus, talk and say, what do we do? We put all options on the table to make sure the school is, stays open Monday to Friday like what it is. And how can we? Make that happen? What are some of the changes? How can we strategically, thoughtfully reduce the cost of running? How can we strategically, thoughtfully reduce the cost of running the school? Or the expense of running the school in such a way that we stay laser focused on our goal, the goal, what we talked about reading. Because the children have a small window. Uh you know, ninth grade um or graduation, those the goals that we have talked about. This is a time for all of us to come together, not just seven of us, not just the executive team. But our entire community, parents, family, together, we will get through this. So but we have to really be very clear. It's for health, safety and learning. Schools provide the most. Uh important safety net. I've lived through that. So I think that is really one guiding principle that comes in my mind as I'm thinking through this. Uh and then start asking. What are the different options? Some of the options will be operational, some of the options will be. Various ways of kind of getting through this, where what are some of the areas where we do have some leeway to change? But some of them we are kind of locked in, so there'll be very little options available. So I'm just going to s- see what. Superintendent or anybody else have thoughts on that?
Um I'll just jump in briefly, um because there's actually the core of your question has been um traveled through the entire comments of the board, I believe. Um so I do want to offer just a tiny bit of context. Multiple amongst us, especially Jackson, has talked about the last time we went through this. Um if we end up with a twenty five million dollar reduction just to create context, that's about a third of what we did last time. And so while last time looms large in our mind, this is actually different. It's different in context. It's different in cause. It's different in magnitude. And it's different in timing. Um so that is, that is, I think, a a good um right sizing that we can all do as we imagine what's coming next. Um when I think about the A um the responsibilities that we have in putting options on the table. The main thing that I believe is important is that we start first with every action that can shelter schools. Um and we've already talked about that a little. The second is that I think that we need to start by putting. Choices on the table, not because any choice is in and of itself right or wrong. But rather because collective experiences with the choices is what will help us make the best choices in the end. And um there are going to be times when that feels uncomfortable or undesirable for any number of people. But the existence of a choice is not the same as a decision. It's merely a understanding of the factors that we're working with. And so we'll be doing that over the coming months. And then just to think a little bit about timeline, the way that I see this is, we announced um this information today. There's not much we can do right away. Then on November nineteenth, we're all paying attention to the news on that day and around that day because that's when the next piece of information about the state economic health will come through. And then it would be the earliest point at which the governor's office or the state might announce any um movement towards midyear reductions. If we do not face any news about midyear reductions, first, we will be happy. And then we will move forward with the twenty five million over the course of the winter and early spring. And we'll do that through a series of um conversations that we will all have collectively. If on or around November nineteenth, there is an announcement about midyear reductions, then we'll start gathering information, we'll rebuild our financial model. And we will have the twenty five million plus an additional increment. There is no way for us to know right now. No one knows it right now. But this is what the um head start gives us, is a chance to learn about our context before we confront all of the details of it. Um if the number gets a little bit bigger than twenty five million, then we're going to have to reset our expectations. We're going to have to dig a little deeper. We're going to have to find a little bit more. But those are all things that we can do because we're culturally strong enough to do it. Because we have a commitment of transparency, because this board has been extremely clear that they want to hear from the community and understand what matters most. And because it's our responsibility. And as Mel said to me recently. Sometimes it's really hard to have to just step into these challenges and take them on head on. But that is also what we've signed up to do. And I know that no one here is going to have a moment in which they. Feel that that is anything less than our total and complete responsibility to the district.
Mel?
Thank you. Um one thing I want to make sure that I that I get to say tonight um is that there's there's this. Conversation of, you know, ninety five percent of of our budget is spent on people and that doesn't leave a lot left. Um I don't want that to be construed in a negative way. The fact that we spend ninety five percent of our budget on people is amazing. That means that we're investing in our talent and our teachers and um we're paying them what they're worth. Um so that i- it's not a bad thing that that that's where it is. When it what, when it becomes. Challenge is just what we're talking about. When there's so much, there's just, we, there's just, we're going to have to start making some really tough decisions about. Um what that means for that ninety five percent and um. That's just something I really wanted to just make sure everybody was clear on that it's not a bad thing. It's just a thing. It's where we're at. It means that we're um. We're just up against some Andrea, I think I said adulting. Didn't I use that word instead? You said it much nicer than I did.
I know, I didn't use adulting. I'll let you use it here.
No, it's okay. But yeah, it's just a. Yeah, thank you.
Before we close, I'm going to hear from Director Harnish and Doc Director Artis.
Thank you so much, Chair. Um I just wanted to say, I know it's been uh said by all of us uh tonight, but I just want to reiterate my deepest appreciation for. All of our teachers and staff. They clearly are the foundation of our students' success. Um and we are fully aware, I am fully aware that uh any any adjustments are going to have an impact and uh certainly. My goal is that we will do everything that we can to um minimize um. Minimize the harm this year and also uh for uh in in the future as well. Um I also i- in through these painful conversations, uh I. Also want to make sure that we are keeping uh the investments moving forward and so that we can continue moving up in a positive trajectory. Um and and it's um I also really hopeful uh that uh. Even in this situation, uh and many other school districts are facing the same thing across uh across the state, that this ultimately will spark a deeper conversation. Uh about how schools are funded in Oregon uh and to ensure that we can provide the highest quality education for all of our students. Um and most importantly, our Salem Kaiser students.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Director Artis?
Thank you. Um I would say first, thank you to our our district team here, but to our. All of our educators, all of our staff, all of our teachers for the work that you do. It is what makes us Salem Kaiser and I feel so. Grateful, so fortunate, and I recognize the privilege that I have to be at this in this space, right? I am. As a as a community member, as as a mom to Salem Kaiser kiddos, as a former student myself and. The I also want to name that the financial hardship of the moment is one that many of us feel. And families are feeling it in their pockets, like we we talk about housing costs, food costs increasing, all of those things are real and they're happening. And and it's hard to have this conversation, right? To think about what are the options ahead? And what are the trade offs when we know that individuals and families and children are feeling it at home and in their bellies? And I also know that it's this is a, there is so much that we can control and and I think that's part of the conversation we have here, right? Is that the 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 state financial situation is not one that we as individuals. Um standalone individuals or that we as a board have control over and and that is hard. And so to to sit here and to think about what is within our. Own um circle of control and uh and I and I say that to my kids as well, like what can, what can we do? And let's hold hands and let's figure out what solutions we have ahead of us. Um and you know, just e- echoing, like our our educators deserve every single penny and more. And they work for it, they earn it, they deserve it, and all of our staff members do. Um I. There are more issues, you know, that we need to work on and continue advocating, as Director Harner said, to make sure that that. There is that fair compensation, that that is sustainable. And that's the other piece, right? What is sustainable? So we we are in a time where we have a. Limited pool already and then like the resources are shrinking, our operation costs are increasing. It may, it it is what happens when you, when you have personnel. I mean, I think to your point, Mel, like it's, none of this is is, it's not labeling good or bad. It's this, this is the the reality and. Um I I'd look forward to working with you all on the solu- the the solutions we can find ahead and. I I've been so excited uh to learn about and and see our curriculum adoption in process. To hear the conversations from administrators and teachers around the instruction work that's happening and. How we're all growing, how we're all being challenged to do this work and the recognition and and the and the. The recognition that our students deserve it, right? And that our students are capable of learning and achieving and that excites me so, so much. And so it's holding that with the. Tension of where we are in this moment. So I I am committed. I I think I just want to kind of reiterate, I'm committed to the success of our schools. I am Salem Kaiser. Um and we're going to, let's move forward together through this next. Whatever the next steps come uh as and adapt to the changing conditions. That's that's what we do. That's. We are resilient um individuals, we're a resilient community and overall, I've said this many times before, but I'm committed to protecting our students' learning. Their safety, uh their sense of belonging and and to stay grounded in in these um. Our students are today and they are tomorrow. They are our future and um you know, think about future generations and I am. I I see my responsibility in that. And so I ask and offer, invite everyone to. Do the same. Um think about what comes, what comes tomorrow um and what comes generations down the road for us and um. Yeah, just, it's a hard moment, but I know we will get through it and. Um we will rise, we will rise through this.
I want to thank everybody that has been a part of this communication. We don't have all of the answers. But we know that together we will do what's best for our students, our staff, our community. I want to thank each and every person that made this uh virtual meeting a possibility. Uh there were several things going on, uh like the interpretations, just organizing the event. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Want to thank you to our district leaders who have uh looked at all of the questions that were generated today. And um no, we don't have answers for all of them, but we will continue having these discussions and making sure you have all of the information you need. Um and we need in order to make the upcoming decisions that have to be made. So as a school board, we remain steadfast in our responsibility to ensure the long term financial health of our district. While keeping students at the center of every decision. We recognize that the months ahead will require difficult choices. Thoughtful dialogue and collaboration across our community. We're committed to transparency throughout this process. And to maintaining our focus on supporting teaching and learning in every school. We appreciate the continued partnership of our families, staff and community members. As we work together to navigate these challenges and build. A sustainable future for Salem Kaiser Public Schools. Like the little train said, I think I can, I think I can, I think I can. Salem Kaiser, I know we can. Thank you very, very much. It is currently six forty P M. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.